Morning, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. I'll rise for the pledge allegiance, please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll go ahead and start with routine business. I'd consider a motion to amend the consent agenda to remove the payment to Avera McKinnon in the amount of $1,820.
So move.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Then I take a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kerski.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Then I'm going to go back up and I'm going to take a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. That takes us to regular business. Item 10 is to authorize a resolution for the...
Do we approve the consent agenda?
Yeah. No, that's okay.
That's fine.
That's why I have a cheat sheet where I mark things off because I'm... And I did it backwards, so that was my fault. So... All right. So that does take us to item 10, which is a resolution for issuance of certificates of participation for a juvenile justice center. We're going to start with Tyler Clatt. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Tyler Clatt, Commission Office. Back in November of 2021, Minnehaha County, along with Tegra Architecture Incorporated and their partner HDR, along with Henry Carlson Construction, began a process of conceptual validation regarding the existing juvenile detention center. That process included benchmark tours, conceptual design, existing building condition assessment, disruption avoidance, planning, and creation of a budget and schedule. As mentioned by the Chair today, was to consider a bond resolution. Some of the highlights and reasons why this project has been moving forward. The current juvenile detention center has a number of safety, security, and building infrastructure concerns, primarily related to the fact that it was built in 1969. Currently, there's 40 secure rooms in that building. Our population trend analyst, Bill Garnos, sees that capacity being met in 2026 with a need for almost up to 70 beds by 2041. Additionally, the space lends itself to security and safety issues based on how long the hallways are, how narrow they are, and how that creates the inability to separate both youth from each other, youth from the juvenile system, and youth from the JDC staff. A new facility would address these issues, building up 64 secure beds, centralizing all of the court services into the juvenile detention center, opening up space in the courthouse as well. The facility would move to a POD system where the staffing is much more efficient and the youth are able to go into the day rooms and continue their daily activities instead of being interrupted because there is an eight-to-one staff ratio that must be kept. This new design would allow that ratio to be maintained when there's intakes and other activities that go on. Ultimately, this will create a new facility that would meet the projected needs for the next 20 years as well. This list is just to show the various public meetings we've had about this topic, about this project, to keep everyone informed. In addition to these commission and building committee meetings, we've met with our partner counties and sent them a few letters over the course of the last, you know, six or 12 months, just to let them know what's going on and keep them updated. That is what I wanted to address, just to reinforce and remind everyone the need of the project. From here, I'll turn it over to our auditor, and he can get into the financial details.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. So as Tyler was demonstrating, kind of the need that's been established to reconstruct the juvenile detention center. So we're presenting to you today a resolution relating to the issuance of certificates of participation, authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more of these lease purchase agreements and approving the authorization and execution of the related documents. So that resolution would allow Minnehaha County to issue debt to construct a new juvenile justice center. The current juvenile justice center was built in 1969, remodeled in 1988, and in 1995. So as Tyler reviewed with you, a study and analysis of the current facility has determined that it's not conducive to the current services required for the juvenile detention center. The resolution that we're presenting to you today is for $50 million to finance the construction of the new juvenile justice center. The resolution specifies authorization of the auditor and the commission chairperson to approve those documents. We've advised on this process through Perkins Cole, our bond counsel, and Collier is our underwriters. We've also reviewed this document with our state attorney's office. We've utilized certificates of participation over the last 30 years for previous financing. The resolution is statute. I've also got some supporting schedules that may be helpful. Do you want me to do it?
Yeah.
So what I have here for you is a sources and uses. It really just kind of outlines the amount of funds that we would receive. We'd receive lower $51 million, of which we would issue bonds of $47.855 million. We would use those funds. $50 million would be for the construction cost. A million, oh, 50 would be for just basically the first six-month interest if we were to assume that we were to issue these bonds on first of June, make our first interest payment in December, and then subsequently, year after year, we'd make principal and interest payments. Total underwriting discount of $323,000. Cost of issuance, a little over $90,000. So that's how we would use those funds. The next schedule kind of helps you see how the cost would impact our levy. So if for that, we would have to levy a little bit less than 17 cents per thousand for each of our taxpayers. That would result in about, if it was a normal house, was $300,000, about a $50 per year cost, at least for the first year, for a homeowner. And then this would just give you the schedule of what our interest and principal payments would be, assuming that we would issue debt in June. Current market rate's around three and a half, so we may have some change between now and if you approve this when we actually issue that. But I think this is a good estimate of what we would expect, about $3.6 million annually for costs to finance this over 20 years. Pause there and see if there's any questions from the commission.
Any questions for Ben at this time? Mr. Bennega?
Ben, we've got 15 county partners and the DOC involved in this project, correct?
That's correct.
And have we had affirmation from all of those in reference to their participation in the future?
I know that we've had conversations with each of our partners. Yeah, maybe Tyler can speak to it better.
Tyler Clatt, Commission Office. So the one thing we realized was that there was going to have more than likely be a change in the daily rate that these counties experience. There was a letter sent to all the partners, you know, letting them know that we anticipate this cost going up to between $400 and $450 a day. At this time, so we asked them, you know, are you supportive of this? You understand that we might go to this model? We have 70% of our partners who have responded to us. The majority that had not responded were waiting for the legislative session to end, so they weren't yeses or no's. They were just waiting until maybe something else could have happened to us instead. And then there were a couple that actually just hadn't responded. I followed up with them and waited to hear back. But when you look at the totals, we've got 60% of partners supported that, and those 60% make up 70% of the total use by the partners. So about 30% of the bad days are not accounted for at this point.
Commissioner Kerski.
Was the state one of the affirming? Did they get back to us? Because the state... We house 25% or 25% of the population of our JDC is technically state youth. They're from all over the state, but 25% of them are there because of state actions. Was the state one of the respondents to our letter, or did they get the letter?
So that letter was sent to just the partners? Since the DOC is not a partner, they were not included in that.
Okay. Yeah. Because when you look at as a percentage, the number of youth that are in our JDC that are there for... They've been adjudicated and sentenced, and now they're... We get to take care of them. My understanding is 25%. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that's a large number.
Questions? Other questions right now? All right. We'll let Ben finish his presentation. If he's not... I'm not sure if you're finished or not, so...
I am. So just before you... The resolution, looking for your authorization of issuance of up to $50 million.
Okay. And my understanding is there's some flexibility with the issuance of that debt, that we could choose to go out with all of it immediately, or we could take it in chunks, depending...
That is correct. Yeah. So it allows for up to $50 million, so you could issue two pieces of varying amounts over different periods of time.
Okay. All right. I'm going to open it up to public comment, and then I'll come back for commissioner discussion. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this project? I know there's a number of people that we have heard from already in this room. We've got the contractor that we've been working with on getting the numbers for the cost of the new facility. We've got judges here. We have a number of different people that we have already had an opportunity to hear from, but if there's anybody now that would like to speak as part of public comment, this is your opportunity. All right. Well, thank you. I will turn it over to the commission then for discussion. It's obviously a big decision for us. Commissioner Kerski.
You know, if the $50 million price tag doesn't make you gasp, you should probably look at it again and think about it. It's expensive to build a jail, and we're not putting in, you know, PlayStations and trampolines. I mean, this is what the minimum, and there's been a lot of effort. I know I haven't been involved, but I know Commissioner Bennega, former Commissioner Heiburger, and many others have really looked at this and pared it down from where it, you know, maybe started. We're building a jail, and we're not building a playground. We're not building a camp, a summer camp, and this is what it's going to take to do it right. And it's really about the safety, you know, equally for the staff as it is for the youth that are going to be housed here. Some of them for short periods of time, others maybe for extended periods of time. And we just... We have to take care of those two sets of people, staff and the youth. And we've had a lot of people through our JDC. A few years ago, we had a facilities task force that went through and looked at it and said, "Oh, yeah, this needs to be replaced." And that was two or three years ago. We've had numerous other people look at it and, you know, it's... I mean, if we were just to rehab what we need to do now or what we have now, it'd cost like $2 million just to put new doors in. And that's putting doors in our existing one, and it needs them. So, you know, it's hard to argue against the need, and I'm not going to argue against the need. It's real. How it's going to be paid for is a conversation that's going to come in the future about who's participating and to what level. Minnehaha County does not have to subsidize the cost of building a jail because we own it, and we're going to be looking to our partners to really up their game if they're going to want to be involved and have their youth housed here. So my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Kipli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as one of the new commissioners, this was one of the first facilities that I got the pleasure of touring, actually a couple separate times, and it is overwhelming in how underwhelming it is, maybe would be a good way to say it. It brings up stark safety concerns, stark business operation efficiency concerns. So what I've seen of the new plans, and yes, I agree, Commissioner Kerski, this price tag is something we definitely have to give due diligence to and consider, but as you alluded to, the cost of doing nothing or the cost of trying to renovate existing, I don't... I just don't think those are the right options. Yeah, we talked about safety a little bit, the concept of workforce retention, too. If we want to recruit quality people to work in a facility, they need a facility that is up to at least basic standards. Workforce efficiency. I'm a fan of this POD system that we'd be moving to. The existing facility is essentially feels like just one long hallway that if you're called to the end of it, you've got to walk the whole distance, and in that span of time, you're losing safety and various efficiency. So I think for all those reasons, I would be supportive of doing something here. This exact financing plan, I think our auditor has done an outstanding job, and his team has done a great job with this financing plan. I think we're getting... I know that rate, Auditor Kite mentioned that that rate is pending and could change a little bit, but I think from a kind of financial arbitrage standpoint, we do have some cash on hand in like, you know, our building fund and things like that. So there are some concerns with taking on debt, but I think our existing debt, I think we can justify the additional debt from an arbitrage standpoint of we were investing other funds in a way that I think is pretty efficient. The last thing I'll mention is that this is not just a juvenile detention center. I think we've been dubbing it the juvenile justice center. So I don't want to forget, us to forget that I think in some of the things I've reviewed, we've kind of ballparked this as 90% of the cost or the square footage or however you want to slice it is the juvenile detention side, but roughly 10% is to support our court system. And I see a couple friends from our court system in the audience today, and I know this is all those same concerns of safety, workforce retention, efficiency applies to the court. That courtroom in the existing space is just not adequate, not very functional, not very safe. So this is not a decision taken lightly, and this will not be an action to take out this much debt very often, but when we do have something that's going to serve our youth, and yes, this debt is a 20-year time horizon and even longer amortization schedule of how we'll essentially be paying this off and recouping costs, but we'll be serving the children that are in this facility for many years beyond any of the debt that we're taking on, so it's a worthwhile investment. So I think I hit all of my points, so I yield back. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any of the other commissioners want to speak? Commissioner Bennega?
Well, I agree with both Commissioner Kerski and Commissioner Joe at this point. We definitely have the need. It's ironic to me that legislature is in the possibility of financing regional jails, but when it came to financing a regional justice facility, juvenile justice facility, they declined to support that. It would have helped a great deal, and since a significant part of the people we serve in those 15 counties is from the Department of Corrections, it would have been nice to have that partner involved in that conversation. So really, the bottom line is, the last step of this is to figure out at some point how we are going to put the formula together to make this all work, which there are plenty of options. There's no question about that. But the youth that we're serving now are totally different than what we were serving 50, 60 years ago, and we will not be able to continue it that way. So I'm definitely supportive of meeting that need and trying to get our youth on a positive path to be re-entered into society rather than making it feel like a jail.
Commissioner Benn... Thank you. I think Joe summed up almost all of my points very well, and I think $50 million is not something that any of us take lightly, but I think, as Commissioner Kerski mentioned, it's the best use of the funds, and I know the work was done prior to Joe and I starting, and I think from everything we've learned, the work was very thorough, very well thought out, and so I would also support it.
All right. Thank you. So just, I would like to say that since I've been on the commission, this is my ninth year, I think this is one of the few things that we've had through... Nobody has spoken in opposition to this project. I don't think I've heard anybody since we started talking publicly about this last September who's come forward and said, "We don't need this project." I think it's very... Anybody who goes out there understands that this is a significant investment in the long-term health of our community by investing in kids who ended up in the system and need some help. I don't think there's a single commissioner that relishes the day they get to come to a commission meeting and vote for a tax increase, because I certainly don't. I've had a few sleepless nights lately thinking about this. But I do think that this is needed. I do think that it is a tax dollars that are well spent. There's still a lot of work to do. I do really want to thank Commissioner Heiburger, who unfortunately was not able to be here today because this was really her passion project. She put her heart and soul since I've been on the commission and earlier than that, and then very significantly in the last year in working through the design and development of this plan. So we owe a great debt to her. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
One more comment?
Oh, yes. Commissioner Kerski.
Two things. Auditor Kite mentioned that, you know, we're not going to... Probably going to look at a couple of bond issues, not do the whole $50 million at once. This Friday, the Financial Action Network will be meeting, and as Commissioner Kipli said, we do have some cash, you know, and we're going to give them a bite at the apple of suggesting possibly alternative ways of using cash and debt to get this built. So we do want... So we don't have to do this all at once, so just to give them a chance to look at this also. And then the other thing is, we may be a little late to the game on this, and Commissioner Bennega mentioned, you know, the state really hasn't taken an interest in this. I just made a phone call half hour ago, and we're really... Have one more chance to try to get a legislator to sponsor some legislation. The state needs to come to the table. I mean, they need to come to the table. If they would pay just the 25% or 10 million of the 50 million, not even 25%, what it would do for the partner counties in reducing not only the state's daily cost, but everybody else's cost when we're housing 25% of their DOC inmates... I hate to call youth an inmate, but that's where we're at, and we really... We're still working on that angle to see if we can get somebody to realize what that 10 million would do for us, so...
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just make one last comment. This isn't a new subject. In fact, I think when I started, and Cindy and I started at the same time, we had conversations at that point about doing remodeling in addition to the current facility, which was... I don't even remember the number of quote "beds," but I think it was somewhere around 60, so this conversation's been on the table for 10 or 12 years probably. So this isn't a new problem, but it's something that needs to be solved. Is that a motion? I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All right. Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. So that takes us to item 11, which is a continued public hearing to consider three 2023 retail on and off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine licenses for Triple J, Inc.
Yes. Commissioners, again, Ben Kite from the Auditor's Office. So this is, yeah, continued public hearing for this consideration of these three liquor licenses. So the Auditor's Office received those three for a retail on and off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine license application. The property address is 7605 East Arrowhead Parkway in Sioux Falls. Each application is for a different suite within that address. The license would allow for the sale of malt beverages and South Dakota Farm beverages at that establishment. It's located in Minnehaha County. Triple J currently holds a retail on-sale liquor and a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota wine license at that same location. The Minnehaha County Medical Cannabis Dispensary License is also issued at that address. So the application, you know, we send the application to the Sheriff's Department, State Attorney's Office, and planning. No concerns were raised by the sheriff or the state's attorney. Initially, the planning department thought there was concern with the zoning, but after they viewed it, they see that the conditional use permit was already in place, so they were currently filed it in. So at this point, planning zoning has no issues with the license being issued at this site. If you have any questions, the applicants I think are here. If they have any questions, then...
Okay. I think that there might be an issue with planning and zoning about the CUP. Scott, if you could just address that quickly.
So Scott Anderson, Planning Director, and I think what I'd like to make aware to the county commission is that there was a CUP as our auditor had indicated. There is a conditional use permit that was granted for the medical cannabis facility, and that was initially indicated was going to be in this bar. So what I don't know, and I think you're going to have to suss this out from the applicant, is how this... What the intent of that building is really going to be. Is it going to be used for the medical marijuana... The medical cannabis facility? Is it going to be a bar? Because at this point, I'm not... I'm uncertain, and they have a conditional use permit for the medical cannabis facility. So how does a bar fit into this? And they have provided us a site plan for that medical cannabis facility, and they need to adhere to that, or they will not be in compliance with their conditional use permit for the medical marijuana facility. So that's where... Those are my issues. I am not sure what really is going on there, so... Madam Chair?
Commissioner Kerski.
Scott, they already have a alcohol license and a... At the same location as this. So they're running a bar, but the dispensary is not currently open, or it's not... The license isn't being used at this point, correct?
That's correct.
So they already have a combination of the two, but only one's being used.
Well, to give some insight into that, when they applied last year for the conditional use permit for the medical cannabis facility, it was testified to and indicated in the staff report and the narrative and the information that was provided to us that that building was going to be used for the medical marijuana facility, and then the bar would be relocated someplace else. So that building was solely going to be used for medical cannabis.
Okay. So that'll be a question for the applicants. Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right. So that is a good segue. We are... This is a public hearing, so if anyone from the proponents, the people asking for this license, want to come and speak, this is your opportunity.
Deciding who has the short straw.
I'm Chrissy Johnson with Johnson Properties. I guess I can answer any questions on some of the confusion maybe with what's going on that any of you have, with what's there. There is currently the bar that is there, that's operating as the Bar Restaurant. We did, when the lottery for the licenses for the medical cannabis came up, we submitted, you know, our name into the lottery and we were drawn. A lot of this came about because the city redid that whole intersection out there at Arrowhead and Six Mile Road. Because of that, we lost a good chunk of land, which was our parking lot. So we've kind of been redoing business plans. What can we do? We really can't operate. I mean, we've lost so much parking, it's affected our business a lot that it's hard to run a bar out of there. I mean, it's changed our numbers, so we thought we would operate the medical cannabis out of there. That is still a possibility. In, throughout the past year, though, we've developed some new plans with our contractor to look at maybe just keeping a small bar there and then adding the additional malt beverage licenses to put in some more machines.
What would happen to the cannabis?
Hold on to it, you know, possibly. We've got plans where we could alter our current building, plans for a new building, just kind of seeing how, what our options are going to be.
Commissioner Karski.
Thank you. So a lot of, lot of questions. So from my understanding, originally, you had applied for a license from the city, thinking that the city had, was the one that was going to be granting this, but you're in the county, so the city, I think, approved the license originally and then said, "Oops, that's a county deal."
License for which?
Malt beverage. Did that happen?
We've got, no. We had, well, may, that might have been a bookkeeper error, because we did apply for licenses for other locations within the city. I think my bookkeeper, our bookkeeper did inadvertently submit the alibi once to the city. I mean, we knew, I knew they should have gone.
Okay, so the city didn't take any action?
Correct, correct, yeah. No, I mean, I knew it was a county thing, and I think our bookkeeper just, when he submitted it, just turned him to the wrong place.
Word on the street, rumor, whatever you want to call it, was that you were going to be relocating to the north, which would put it in the city. I mean, you're in a unique area. You've got the city pretty much on almost every side of you. So is there a plan to relocate any of this, or is it that off the table? What's going on?
Well, we are, we're not relocating. Same bit, same ownership group. We are building a new business. How many blocks away is it, would you say, Paul?
It's actually in the new development that's over there that Signature has across the street. We're building a brand new facility.
So you're building a new facility across the street, kind of to the north?
Yeah, down a couple, yep, blocks. That's going to be, one end, it starts with a, you know, it's a family-style restaurant, and then there's a bar, you know, but that's, we're not moving any licensing over there. That's an entirely new, new business we're doing.
So you-
We're not transferring a liquor license or anything. We've, we're purchasing a city liquor license from someone else for that location.
If I may?
Go ahead.
So you currently have a full alcohol on and off sale license, correct?
Correct.
And you want to add three malt beverage licenses to this location to have a total of four, plus that cannabis dispensary thing's kind of hanging out there with some uncertainty at this point?
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood everything that's going on.
Yes.
And you're looking at adding on to this building, or just remodeling this building?
Hopefully remodeling. Our contractor's got, you know, plans, the building's a lot bigger than it looks from the outside, so we've got the ability to remodel.
driveway location has taken away some of their parking that they had in the past. The idea that they have is this particular location, right now, today, is not nearly as busy as has been in the past because of the reduction on how you get into the parking or what that allows to happen. So they've looked at a different business model to basically get away from more of that, I'm going to say, bar food industry, to get more into the video lottery side of things. Those patrons, you don't have as many of those patrons that come to your site, and they do have a history of that, because they have multiple locations that are here in the Sioux Falls environment, so they understand what and the amount of people that would be coming there, so it's going to be less. And the parking lot, as our drawings that we've gone through so far, that will accommodate those licenses at that location. You're just not going to have a large bar slash restaurant environment there. That's not going to happen anymore. If you want to go in there and get a hamburger, you can probably go in there and get a hamburger, but you're not going to be able to get much more than that. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, yes, I was responsive, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Karski.
Two, you're at a fairly busy intersection, forty-two and, is it Six Mile Road?
Six Mile Road, yep.
What's the speed limit? I mean, is that a four-way stop there? I'm trying to remember. I just drove by there, went to the FOP for a birthday party on Saturday, and I kind of looked at the corner. I've never been in the alibi, so I don't know the corner real well. I live on the far other end of town, so it helped me understand.
I guess I have not taken a look at the latest drawing. I believe it is Infrastructure did the engineering there for the city on the Arrowhead expansion. Right now, there's a temporary light system that's put into place. I believe in the future, that's going to become more of a permanent light situation.
Speak in the microphone, please.
Nope, sorry about that. I believe in the future, that is going to become a permanent light that's going to be at that location, but to answer your question, I, I'm not sure.
Speed limits, do we know? Can you tell me what the speed limits are east-west, north-south?
If there's going to be a light there?
Yeah, well, current speed limit.
If there's going to be a light there, it's, you're going to be stopping at the intersection. I believe you're, I can't, I'm, I would be guessing on what the miles, what the speed limit would be. You're still within the city limits, so I'm going to assume that you're going to be thirty, thirty-five, maybe, somewhere in that range. You're still within the city limits when you're on Arrowhead Parkway.
Okay.
Other questions? Commissioner Blainberg.
You had mentioned that there were a lot of moving parts that things are being determined as you go, kind of. Can you explain how you would go forward if you received these and how you would go forward if you didn't? Specifically, I'm curious about the cannabis part of it.
Yeah, that would be, that would be your, I'm more on the design of the construction side of things from, you know, what the county is going to allow, and then we would design the building to fit those parameters. Cannabis is an open environment right now in our industry, so that would be kind of what the decision is made here today.
Ultimately, what we'd like to move forward with is the plan, you know, primarily our focus is to want to move forward with the malt beverage and, you know, establish with the additional machines.
So then, just to follow up, I thought I had heard you say that maybe another building? Did I misunderstand?
We could use our current building or put up a new building.
In addition to the current building, or would it be a replacing? I'm just trying to understand if both would be operating, like, all the video lottery and the medical? If you received the license, would that all happen in the same area?
I guess it could. I mean, we, we all, you know, we could, but.
As far as the building structure itself, I know I said this before, and maybe I'm answering this question wrong, and if I am, please re-ask. Depending on what the decision is made here today would depict how we would draw up the balance of what that building structure would be there. Renovation of the existing facility with an addition on to it, or if everything comes to fruition here, there's a probability that there would be a brand-new building that would be on that site, upgraded, new facility, let's say it that way. And again, I'm sorry, I, I hope I answered your question. The decision that you guys make today, at the end of the day, warrants what they're going to do with their site. That truly is the answer to your question, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Well, I would say that you are the owner of the property, and you've, are asking for two, in my opinion, two completely incompatible uses for that property. Right now, you have a CUP that says that the whole entire building will be used for one purpose, and to my reading of our cannabis ordinance, you're not in compliance with that ordinance. And you're asking for a separate use for the building, because when you applied for the cannabis, you said that the whole entire building was going to be used for that purpose, and it was going to be like a medical facility. And now you're asking for it to be treated like a bar with lots and lots of video lottery machines in it. And so I don't think that it's our decision how you use your property, I think that's your decision, but I don't think you've provided compatible uses, and what you're asking for today is not in compliance with the CUP that you have on file right now. So I don't see how we move forward with this personally, and I just think it's very frustrating that you're here asking us these kind of questions. It's not our decision how you use your property. You need to tell us what you want to do with your property, and then you need a CUP that's in compliance with that use. And if, if it's not, if you've changed your mind about what you want to use the property for, then you need to take care of what you have currently on record and move to a different business model. That's obviously your choice, but that's not our decision, that's your decision. Is that fair?
Yes, I mean, I guess I understand what you're saying, it just, if we can't, yeah, I guess we were wanting to know if we can have the malt beverage licenses before we walk from the other one.
Commissioner Kipley.
Just, because it does seem like we're kind of walking in two different directions at once, and because I guess, again, that's why I was trying to set the cannabis aside as an issue, to just see what the core issue here is, is suitable for this, and just because, I guess, maybe asking a question of my colleagues, or Scott from planning, or the proponents here, but just because they have the conditional use permit for the cannabis, does that make it unsuitable for use for this other proposal simultan, like, can they hold that and still go forward with modifying their bar? I guess I'm holding out, maybe seeing it in the best light of the proponents, that their proposal to move forward with this, if you could set the cannabis aside, would have some merit and be potentially reasonable, so long as we, if they tried to then go forward and use the cannabis license and that CUP, they would be incompatible. I think what we heard from Scott and planning is, they have a planned design for what that's supposed to look like, so if they start to try to use it, we would still have leverage to go back in and say, "No, you're not using it correctly." So we aren't going to end up with a dual-use in the same building, cannabis dispensary and bar video lottery, all, we would get to see that whole design conceptually before they could go through that. So I guess in my mind, I'm trying to set aside the cannabis license, and if they even intend to go forward with using that, and just the merits of what they're asking to do today, there's a part of me that wants to say yes to that pending other opponent testimony and other things, but are those two completely mutually exclusive ideas, I guess is maybe the question?
Yeah.
I'd let Scott come forward and talk about that.
Once again, Scott Anderson, Planning Director, and to answer your question, Commissioner Kipley, they are completely two different uses, and I would say, the way that the conditional use permits are written for the medical marijuana, medical cannabis, they're not compatible, because there are specific conditions in there that the building, the business has to be closed at ten PM, and that's not conducive for a bar. So, I mean, I just, they're not, they have to follow the site plan. The site plan shows the entire building being used for medical cannabis. So, I mean, there's going to have to be changes. If they're going to proceed ahead with medical marijuana and a bar, they're going to have to come back in at a minimum and modify their conditional use permit for the medical marijuana, because there's a, I just think that socially, there's a lot of questions about how you reconcile a bar and medical marijuana, medical cannabis, because as Commissioner Bender indicated, you know, initially, the whole concept of medical cannabis is that it's like a health, it's like a clinic, basically. It's, you're providing a medical need, and now you're, now it's a bar and a medical need, and I, there's going to have to be really some drilling down and looking at this if you're going to have a bar and medical marijuana together. So I don't know, does that answer your question?
Madam Chair, that gets to, I think, their simultaneous use, sounds like it would be currently mutually exclusive, just that time element, so I get that, but I guess my question is, is it mutually exclusive? Could they move forward with what we're being asked of today and basically almost self-evidently concede that they're going to no longer pursue this other course? And that's their business decision. I guess I'm, I think we've kind of, they need to decide what they're doing, but if they're coming forward with this request today and we would approve it, they're at least completely back to the drawing board on the medical cannabis, right? And they would have to come back to planning and show us, maybe it is conceivable, I'm trying to stay agnostic on that, that maybe they could show us that there's some way to do it, otherwise they might have to give up on that license. And that's their business decision, if they want to pursue this conditional use permit and be medical cannabis that has a CUP, or do they want to go forward with this style of bar video lottery? And so it may be it's mutually exclusive of operating on that one site, but I guess I'm not necessarily seeing something where we would have to oppose what they're saying today, that they would then have to make a choice, if that's somewhat nuanced, sorry.
Commissioner Karski.
And I, fully on board with what you're saying, Commissioner Kipley, and I'm trying to get that firm answer. Can you have a cannabis dispensary and even one license on this property? Because if, they have one license now. If they open a cannabis dispensary, they got to get rid of that alcohol license on this property, because the conditional use says you can only, you can't have both. Is that correct? So that is correct, is what I'm hearing. So if we approve additional alcohol licenses, that cannabis, and they open it, they can't run them both, like you said, at the same time. So they're giving up one or the other.
Commissioner Karski, I hope I pronounced your last name right. We've just, I'm going to go back to what you had referred to before, business plan, strategy, coming in with something. I just briefly had a conversation with Scott. If it would be a possibility to table this item until the next meeting, we would sit down with Scott and his staff, we would come up with a plan, a business plan, a drawn-out model of what the building structure would be, how the layout is, and we would go through that with his staff to make sure that we are meeting the guidelines that the county has. We will then come back at another time. Is that acceptable to the Commission?
Commissioner Bennigan.
I have one other question.
And this is a public hearing, so I'm going to need to give an opportunity for any opponents later. I didn't, sorry to interrupt. No, you go ahead and give your comment, and then I'm going to give opponents an opportunity to talk.
I'm still a little confused with the medical cannabis lottery. It was my interpretation or memory that that was about a year ago, that you won that drawing, if you will, but wasn't there sixty days that you had to use that before you had to turn it back? I don't think you can keep it forever, is that right, Scott? So what are you going to do with, you can't sell it to anybody else. It has no value, I don't believe. It's not like a liquor license. So I think that has to be part of your business plan, too, because it seems like it's, I hate to use the analogy, but this seems like Where's Waldo game kind of deal of what you're putting where and where are they now.
Scott could maybe answer this question there. Scott could maybe answer this question there. I believe, Commissioner Benega, there was something related to a timeline on it.
Yeah, there was, I don't know exactly.
I, I don't remember what the timeline is. On behalf of our client at that partic- particular time, and Scott referred to this as a drawing or something that was submitted to the county at that time. We did submit, and I believe we were in receipt of a complete building permit at that time, I believe. Am I correct on that?
No, I believe you needed to get a building permit. You could, you submitted the drawings for the CUP.
We submitted them. I, I know there was a process that was gone through at that time. I don't know how far that actually went. But I mean, I do know, and I thought we had filed for even a building permit. If we did not, then I have that, I have that wrong. But there was a timeline, and we had submitted on our client's behalf just for a footprint on that property. We had done that.
And the timeline is for the operating the business, I believe. So, this is a public hearing. And so if there's anybody here who would like to speak in opposition to this application, I'm going to give you an opportunity. I think the commission's been giving you that, giving that side of the case a little bit. But if there's anybody here that wanted to speak in opposition, this is your opportunity. Okay, doesn't appear to be anybody. Commissioner Karski.
I can make a motion to table this to February 28th.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it, but I'm wondering if that gives them enough time? Because this is, seems like it's extremely confusing. And frankly, I think the planning and zoning is going to get, to need to be involved in this again, maybe.
And I, if I may.
Commissioner Karski.
I did February 28th instead of the next meeting, because we don't have a meeting next week. February 21st, I don't think everybody's going to be here. So I'm imagining February 28th is, that's the reason for the magic of that date.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I, I guess I was just in the same boat as Commissioner Benega, that I don't know that there's any urgency on us. I wouldn't mind giving them more time than that. But I don't have a specific date in mind to amend that, but.
Do we need a specific date?
Can we just defer it? Need this date?
First meeting in March, would be March 7th. So that put them out about a month. I don't know, Scott, do you have any thoughts about how long you think they might need?
Well, technically, it's not going to be difficult. I mean, really, it's going to boil down to what use they're proposing, and then we move forward from there. So they need to really decide what use they're going to have, and then bring forth a plan, a site plan that we can review. And just to clarify, there's been some, some questions about the timeline for that medical marijuana license. The conditional use permit, they need to do something within two years. And so basically, they have used up a year already. So, that's, that's the timeline for that, for the conditional use permit. Now, their license is through the auditor, and that's something separate from the conditional use permit.
So Scott.
Scott, stay, stay up there, Scott.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
So, if they make a revision to the CUP, does that have to go through joint planning before it comes here? So do we need to add time in that for that process? If they decide to change.
So right now, I, I, when I, I need to see the site plan, I need to see what they're proposing. Because you're right, I mean, if they're going to be making significant changes to, which would warrant or require the whole conditional use permit be reviewed, then yes, it's going to have to go back to the Planning Commission, back to a joint city-county meeting if it were not appealed. So, at this point, it, it sort of depends, I guess is the answer, on what they're going to be proposing.
Commissioner Kipley.
That was going to be my question, is if we needed input, that, is there value added? I, I guess I'm hearing from you that it's somewhat dependent on what they propose. But I, I would like to see Planning Commission maybe take a bite at this and give us some good advice, rather than we're, this is already our second bite at the apple of this, we've deferred it once. I kind of just want to make sure we're deferring it out long enough that we get it right next time, and we can just make a final judgment, but.
So I'm wondering if it makes sense for them to withdraw and then reapply once things are clarified?
That does sound like a clean option. Does that take any action from us or from the applicants?
That would require something from the applicant.
The liquor, the, the, the malt beverage licenses, yeah, so.
Scott, just another question. Do you have any idea if the city's going to annex this property in an immediate future?
Unlikely. It, it, that's, so annexations with the city are typically driven by the, the app, the property owner or, or the developer. And so unless they want to be annexed in, the city's not going to do any kind of a forced annexation. So, that.
Thank you.
All right, so we can take action, or, Commissioner Karski.
So, motion on, and the second is for till February 28th. I guess it's up to the applicant in the meantime, if they want to withdraw that application and reapply. And they could do that, which would take this off our agenda at that point, so.
Good point. Thank you. All right, so we do have a motion and a second. If you'd like to make a comment, that would be fine.
If the application, if the application is withdrawn, what is the timeline, normal standard timeline, to be back up in front of you guys? Is that 30 days, is that 45, is that 60 days? What is that time parameter?
For the, for the actual liquor, the malt beverage license.
Because what you guys are asking is, you're asking us to basically resubmit for those malt beverage licenses. We're going to pull those malt beverage licenses, we're going to basically cancel that request, and then we're going to resubmit. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
That is, that is what we are suggesting, to give yourselves the time that you need to get through the process.
And I'm just, what my question is, is then, say if we do that, what is the timeline for us for that reapplication process? Do we have to go through the Planning Commission then for those ahead of time, and then we come back here? So is that a 60-day timeline, or, I'm just trying to gauge this, that's all I'm trying to do.
So there's two different questions there. I'm not quite sure how long it would take you to get through the planning and zoning side of the equation if you decide to amend your existing CUP. And I'm looking to the auditor to see if he knows how long it takes to reapply for a malt beverage license.
I, I think it's on 30 days, it gives us time to notice the, the public hearing that we would have and to get it back on the agenda. So I would say 30 days from when the applicant applies to when we can have it further commissioned.
Thank you. All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments from the commissioners?
I would be blunt, and I'd just say that I would like to know what you're going to do with the medical marijuana.
Before you come back?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that won't be necessarily part of the discussion. All right, wow, this was nice and confusing. So we had a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Well, hopefully, we've gotten through the hardest part of our agenda. That takes us to item 12, which is a presentation by the Minnehaha County Coroner. Dr. Snell, thank you for being patient with us this morning. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, commissioners. As you know, that every year for us, we never know what we're going to have. It's always dependent on, I guess you'd say, nature, more than it is on me. But if we take a look at the next slide, can I do that? Okay. If we look at last year, we actually had a drop in the total number of cases that reported to our office. A decent-sized drop in that. But then when you look at those cases, they were accepted for us to complete the death certificate on. We actually saw about a 15% increase in that number of cases. If you look at those that we accepted to do the death certificate, but then we actually took and actually physically looked at the body, there was a small drop there, less than 4%. The number we actually autopsy, complete autopsy, examined everything, and that stayed the same, no change in that. But the number of externals dropped. If we drop that number, we're shifting more of those over to the ones that we don't look at. In other words, we get the call, we accept, we're going to do death of it, but we don't need to look at that body to make a determination. And as you can see, the number of cases that we had the information, completed the death on, but did not look at it, went up almost 25%. The number of cases that we get notified after the fact. So when it says DC kickback, that means that the person who pronounced that individual dead failed to notify us. We were notified sometime later, either by the state vital records or by a funeral home, of this death. In that case, there was 50 of them. So it's a little over four a month that we experienced there. If we then look at the number of cases that were called to us, but we said, this is not our case, there was a large drop, about 45% there. And again, what that is telling us is that the cases that are getting reported to us really shouldn't have been reported to us. So we see a decline in that. And then again, just the number of cases that got reported to us would have been the next thing. So let's take a look at those that we actually decided to look at. Our top five diagnoses were drug deaths, gunshot wounds, traffics. Traffics include both the driver, passenger, and pedestrian. Alcohol and, and heart disease, namely coronary disease, were about the same. And then our fifth one was hypertension. So we have heart disease accompanying kind of the bottom two. But again, as you can see, violent types of death occurred for the top three in those. And I do consider a drug death as a violent death. If you look comparing that to last year, there was a little bit of change in there, but for the most part, we're all the same, top five. Those that we accepted, the cause of death predominantly, we're dealing with naturals. Notice that the death certificates I do predominantly are naturals. The next would be accidents. If we change that to the ones that we decided to examine, naturals take second with accidents going up, and suicides taking a larger jump there as well. If we look at our infants last year, we had a total of six infants, which is not bad. Two of those were bed sharing with parents, one was a bed, one was a couch. One of those was undetermined. It was sharing with the family member on the, the surface, but we couldn't tell, am I supposed to do something with this? Trying to get, somebody else working there? Oh, there goes. We couldn't figure out what that was in that case. Four of the infants were considered positional. One of those was bed sharing. Positional means the nose and mouth is covered usually in a face-down position, but also there was some where the baby got between the bed and the wall. So that would be a type of that. And then we had one infant head trauma. There was two originally listed, but it turns out that second one was actually came from another community, came in and we did it. So it wouldn't be counted as this county. So we only had one of those homicides. Looking at our naturals, cardiovascular, that means it's like an aortic dissection, something other than a heart attack or high blood pressure. Respiratory, which is usually emphysema or COVID, would be second, followed by hypertension, and then coronary disease. And this is in a decreasing, so heart disease is number one, hypertension, and the other two are essentially the same. If we look at those that we actually examined and comparing our accidents, drug deaths are way above normal, but they're less than they were last year. Traffics went up a little bit, accident, asphyxia's went up, and then drownings went up as well. So we're shifting what we're seeing there in that. If we look at their drug deaths, kind of nice news in this, in the fact we saw a drop in the number of methamphetamine deaths. We did see about the same number of fentanyl deaths, but we did see a combination of other types of drugs increase this year. So not your opiates, your heroin, fentanyl, meth, the other types of drugs, prescription drugs, those went up a little bit. Again, as you can see, we haven't seen heroin in, that we could definitely say was heroin since 18. One new little twist this year, we did start seeing methamphetamine and fentanyl combined. And we had not been seeing that before this year, so that's a new twist to our drug scene. Looking at suicides, we actually saw a small drop in that. March was the number one month, followed by September. As you can see, again, only one month was a holiday month. So the concept of holidays being the most common, we don't see that here. As always, gunshot wounds are the most common, followed by hanging, and then followed by drug toxicity there. So looking forward, toxicology costs keep going up. I mean, transportation issues for them, supply issues for them, unfortunately, that keeps going up. We have tried to shift stuff over to the state, they've gotten a faster turnaround time on alcohol tests. So when we're going to do alcohol, we do try to shift it over to them, say there. Transport costs, I thought for sure we would see an increase last year, we didn't. So, is it going to happen this year? I don't know, I do worry about that. And then I anticipated last year, when I was doing this presentation, we would see an increase for '22. And I was surprised we didn't, but December went off the record. We had a huge December, January last month continued with that process. So the last two months have been higher than any month all of last year. So are we now seeing that increase I thought we would see last year, and we're now seeing it now? I don't know. If you look at the national average, when you look at other medical examiner's offices, they either continued their levels of night, of 20 and 21, or they were like us, they fell all the way back to pre-20 levels. So the same thing that I've seen happen, other larger medical examiner's offices have seen it as well. So it seems to be in the country, you're either continuing or you're falling back. And it's not some, you could say, that population saw this or this population, it's not been that way. And as I said, the unpredictability in this really makes it hard for me to give you guys an estimation of what we're going to see this year and for next year. But as always, we do worry about, as this county grows, as the city grows, that we will see an increased number of cases coming out of this area. As always, we're trying to balance the need for the community of looking and telling exactly what happened to this individual versus what it costs us to operate. So we're always trying to walk that balance if we can. Questions?
Questions for Dr. Snell? I don't see any. Well, I really appreciate you coming. You're one of the unsung heroes, I think, of Minnehaha County. Your work doesn't always get the attention it deserves, but we appreciate it. Commissioner Karski.
Just a quick comment. Dr. Snell, thank you for your testimony last week. I know there was a bill up there. I thank you for your testimony last week. There's a bill up before the legislature that would have impacted they, you know, about reporting deaths. And I know you do not see all the deaths that occur in Minnehaha County. Would have made your job real interesting and increased the cost to Minnehaha County taxpayers if that bill had passed. So appreciate your efforts on that and getting that done.
Yeah, and the last I heard was that it was transitioned over to vital records, which I reached out to vital records that same day and recommended, because their computer program, all they got to do is run a program, write a simple algorithm, and it'll run, and it'll produce that number in a matter of minutes. And it would be more complete than what I see. And also, it could tell them what county they originated from. Because that's part of the death certificate, it's where you live, not where you, both, where you live and you died. So it made so much more sense for vital records to do that, and that's how the bill was transitioned. I don't know what happened to the bill, but I know we were totally removed from it. So yes, it was something that we tried to come forward and, and try to help everybody involved in that.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Thank you for your time this morning, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 13, which is to authorize the chair to sign the 2023 jail housing per diem contracts with Lincoln County, McCook County, Clay County, and Lake County. Warden Mattson, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Warden Mike Mattson with the jail. I'm requesting we have all these housing contracts, and I'm requesting authorization. They've already been signed and sent back by the counties that I sent them to. One is an amendment, and that is the Lincoln County Housing Contract. All the amendment, all the, that amendment is, is changing the housing per diem rate.
Any questions for the warden? Commissioner Kipley.
Madam Chair, so I see this is at 10615. Just for a point of reference, do you know what the federal rate is?
I'm still negotiating with the feds on our new federal contract.
Okay, what is it ex- currently then?
Currently, it's $97.
Okay.
And we're negotiating 112.
Okay.
The minimum three-year contract, so that's us making a little more on the first year, breaking even on the second year, and doing a little less on the third year.
Sure, just wanted that frame of reference for feds versus our state partners, so thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Public comment? All right, any other commission discussion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the signature of the housing per diem contracts.
Second.
Motion in a couple seconds. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, so you get the next one, too, which is declare capital asset number 0219 as surplus and authorize disposal of scrap metal.
Correct. This is asset number 0219. It is the garment conveyor system that is located in the old intake area that is no longer occupied or being used. It has been removed. been removed. It has no substantial value other than scrap metal value. So I'm requesting to surplus it and dispose of it as scrap.
Make a motion to dispose. Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kerski.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. That takes us to item fifteen, which is to authorize the chair to sign the 2023 Juvenile Detention Center Partner County per diem agreements. Jamie Gravitt, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jamie Gravitt, Juvenile Detention Center. Before you today is the contracts for our partner counties for the year 2023. This has nothing to do with any new building that would be built. Those would still need to be negotiated in the future. This is just for 2023. The full cost for our non-partners in DOC is three fifty-eight sixty-eight a day. The price of two seventy-eight oh seven is reflective of what the discount is that we give to our partners. I would ask for your authorization for the chair to sign these contracts.
Commissioner Kerski.
This is just a one-year contract.
Correct. We do these yearly.
Get ready for a long discussion in 2024.
We're, we're already thinking about that and preparing for that and, and plan to start those meetings very shortly.
Excellent.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Any public comment on this item? If not, roll call vote, please.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. Takes us to item sixteen. I think Steve gets to stay up here for a while now. First one is to consider bid results and award recommendation for MC twenty-three dash zero one mill and asphalt overlay.
Good morning, Commissioner. Steve Groh, Highway Superintendent. We opened bids for our mill and overlay program, and we were pleased that all the bids came in under our estimate. And we're looking for your authorization to award the contract to Dunick out of Prinsburg, Minnesota.
Questions for Steve?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion in a second. Any public comment? Room's kind of getting empty, so I don't think so. All right. We have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Oh, yes.
Quick question, Steve. Is this a new contractor or have we dealt with, worked with this one before?
We, I don't believe Minnehaha County has. I've worked with them in the past. They do a lot of work in southwest Minnesota, and occasionally they come over into South Dakota.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Item seventeen, consider a motion to adopt a resolution for participation in the South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Reinspection Program.
Every year, we select a bridge inspection firm to handle our county bridge inspections through the DOT to satisfy federal highway requirements. Last few years, we've had Civil Design, Inc. out of Brookings perform this work. We've been very pleased with working with CDI, and we'd ask your permission to continue this relationship with them for another year.
Questions for Steve? Not? I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Doesn't look like there's anybody here for public comment. So roll call vote, please.
Kipley.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item eighteen, authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Sioux Valley Electric for the relocation of a power line in preparation for work on Minnehaha County seventeen dash ten, Highway one forty-nine reconstruction.
Once again, Steve Groh, Highway Superintendent, this is the part of the Highway one forty-nine project that's going to start the first phase this year. Part of that project is to excavate down the large hill right at the intersection at Conner Road one eighteen. To be able to lower the roadway, to make it safer, and to build the resulting retaining wall, Sioux Valley needs to relocate their electrical infrastructure. And for past practices and agreements, we're looking for your approval to reimburse Sioux Valley for their costs associated with our project.
Commissioner Kerski.
It's a very small section of a very long project. Will they be, will this be the only part that we have to relocate?
This is the only part right now that we're aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any public comment? All right. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item nineteen, authorize the chair to sign a balancing change order, CCO number two, between Minnehaha County and double H paving for the completion of Highway one thirty and one thirty-seven intersection improvements.
This was the Crooks Corner Intersection Project that was improved in 2022. There were some cost adjustments. There were delays to the project based on Crooks Gas Company needed to relocate some of their facilities. Plus, we also upgraded the stop signs to make them more visible for the east and westbound traffic. This is just a bookkeeping move to change quantities and to get everything down to zero. But we owe the contractors so we can close the project out.
Questions for Steve? All right.
I'd move approval.
Second. Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kipley.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty, authorize the chair to sign an amendment between Minnehaha County and Civil Design, Inc. for a time extension to complete the inspection of Minnehaha County twenty-one dash ten Structure Fifty dash three three zero dash zero six six rehabilitation.
This is the structure that was rehabilitated, supposed to have been done last year, just south of Sherman on Highway one oh three. There were delays result of the area-wide concrete shortage, where they weren't able to get concrete in a timely manner. And then when they did finally get concrete to pour the deck, they had some form false work fail, which delayed the project several weeks while they redid the forms. They did not get the bridge roadwork done last fall before the weather moved in, but there isn't much left to do. We do have a contract with CDI to perform contract administration and observation. There's plenty of money left in their contract. It's just that their contract was set to expire at the end of the year. This just is strictly to extend the deadline on our contract with CDI so they can finish their work for us on this project.
Questions for Steve? Commissioner Bennega.
Steve, there was, or maybe still is, kind of an allocation of concrete. Is that still going on?
It's over the winter. We don't know what to expect this spring yet. So I know everybody's been working on securing stockpiles for this year. But we'll have to, last year we didn't, weren't made aware of this until midsummer.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd move approval.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. So that takes us to item twenty-one, which is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Civil Design, Inc. for construction administration services of MC twenty-one dash oh nine Structure Fifty dash two seventy-nine dash one forty rehabilitation. It's your last one.
This is our last one, six of the number six. But this was a project we had submitted for big funding for and were successful last year. It is a deck preservation. We're replacing the deck. We awarded a contract to PRAM Construction to do this work this year. And we are requesting your permission to hire CDI, who did the design and the big fund applications, to hire them to do the contract administration for the structure. This is an eighty-twenty state-funded contract.
Commissioner Kipley.
Make one comment. Just kudos to you and your staff. You know, when we're getting these opportunities to leverage taxpayer dollars, you know, the eighty-twenty distribution. I know sometimes it doesn't always work out that way, and we have to get more competitive for the bid. We have to put in more skin in the game on our side. But just applaud these efforts, and we'll continue to look for these opportunities, I think, to leverage our taxpayer dollars locally here with state matching. So this is a good example of that, and we'll, I'll be supporting this one. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any public comment? Doesn't look like it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming this morning. All right. So this takes us to item twenty-two, which is to consider a petition for compromise of lien DPNO five six nine one nine. Melinda, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The action requested today on this lien is to compromise lien DPNO five six nine one nine with a full payment of three thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The petitioner and her daughter have contacted representatives from Rural Housing Development and the Governor's House Program regarding requirements that they will have to meet in order to qualify for affordable housing. One requirement for both programs is that existing liens will need to be resolved prior to applying. The lienee currently lives in an apartment that is pending a significant rent increase that she will not be able to afford. She is unemployed and only receives a monthly social security benefit of one thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and sixty cents due to her disability. The application includes lists of assets in the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and liabilities in the amount of two hundred and sixty-three dollars. She does not file income tax and did not claim any other forms of income. For your consideration, the petitioner and lienee have each provided a narrative to explain the challenging life experiences they have overcome and to express their desire to qualify for an affordable home. There is no real estate transaction pending at this time, but together they hope to satisfy this lien in order to move forward with the application process. The lienee, the petitioner and the lienee are both here. If you have any questions for them.
All right. Thank you. First, does anybody have any questions for Melinda? As usual, Melinda, you did an excellent job of putting this together. So thank you. If either the petitioner or the lienee would like to say anything, you could just stand where you are. You don't have to identify yourself.
I don't have much to say. It would just help my daughter to live a little more comfortable life and have something to live in. And when I'm gone, I will feel good that she has her own place, her own. She just needs a helping hand from time to time. And she does very well. She's very independent. And it really, the outcome, we really thank the county for helping her this far. And it kind of got pushed under the rug because it's been so long ago and it's been forgotten. And so I guess whatever you decide, we'll make it work. So thank you for your time. And we're grateful that you're even listening to us. So whatever.
That's fine. Thank you so much. All right. Any comments, discussion, questions?
Madam Chair, could make a motion to accept the offer and compromise the lien as offered?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other comments or discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. That takes us to item twenty-three, which is to consider a petition for compromise of lien DPNO nine one three two five. Melinda.
Again, the request on this compromise is to release the petitioner from the joint lien DPNO nine one three two five with payment of one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, leaving the remainder of the lien balance in one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars in the name of the ex-spouse. If you recall, this petitioner was here the previous meeting. The petitioner is in the process of closing on the purchase of the home and have previously requested a compromise, which you approved on January twenty-fourth. He returns today with a second request for a lien recorded against him, which is noted in the title company report, lien DPNO nine one three two five, in the amount of three thousand two hundred and forty dollars, represents shared parental responsibility for juvenile legal counsel. He is hoping to resolve this lien as well prior to the closing date on February twentieth and is requesting a partial compromise of jointly, of the joint lien with his offered payment of one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. The lien was originally recorded under the wrong name without additional information, date of birth, social security number. So it did not come up in my search, and the only way I found out about it is because the title company then asked, after we had gotten approval on the previous lien, what we were going to do about this one. So we had to go and search for it and found it, and here it is.
Thank you, Melinda. Any questions for Melinda?
Thanks for your extra work.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone here that wanted to speak about this?
He had a work conflict today, so he's not available.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Be looking for any discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second to accept the offer of compromise. Roll call vote, please.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Melinda. All right. Takes us to item twenty-four, which is to consider a motion to appoint one member to the Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Tyler, you bring us an abundance of applicants, an abundance of riches. Thank you.
Tyler Black Commission Office. So early or late 2022, we had a resignation from the Housing and Redevelopment Commission. That notice of that open position was provided, and as of February third, we had five applications ever received. Those are included in your materials, and if you have any questions, be happy to try and answer them. For a five or, well, I don't know. It's to fulfill the remainder of the open term.
Questions for Tyler? It's always a hard thing. Usually we, it's not so hard because we only have one applicant, and we just take care of it. So Commissioner Kipley, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just gonna credit you with, I think, four of these applicants are in the current Chamber of Commerce Leadership Sioux Falls class with you. So.
I think one was referred to us by a different number of leaderships.
There you go. I, yeah, I'm a fan of those leaders, local leadership programs providing a pipeline. So maybe we won't always just have one applicant. So yes, I appreciate your work in getting us five applicants. I have met Mr. Beigler once before, and I noticed that he, on his application, he mentioned his broad, wanting to potentially serve on various boards that we may have openings in the future. So I appreciate, and he's also on the FAIR task force now. So I know, so I appreciate his willingness to serve in many various capacities. I guess I'd ask my colleagues or Tyler, I just don't know much about this board and what skill sets we might be looking for. I think I reached out to one of the existing members, and it sounds like some, some banking and finance experience is probably a helpful thing, but probably not required. But just seeing if there's any other input.
I think that's a fair assessment of the kind of the skill and the background you need. It's, it's, there's a lot you can do with the Housing and Redevelopment Commission. What we do with ours is not that as broad as it could be. It's specifically focused to the management of safe home. I would add that, as you mentioned, Chad is on the task force for the Fairgrounds. To consider Lloyd Properties is a partner in this management of safe home. We do have one applicant who is a, is employed by Lloyd, and another one, while is not a resident of Minnehaha County, which is not necessarily a prohibiting fact, but is something else to consider.
Who's the Lloyd company?
Austin Clays. Austin.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, is it, we, Lloyd doesn't have representation on the committee currently?
They do not have a member on the committee, but they participate in our meetings and provide us updates on the finances of the, of the facility.
Sure.
Go ahead. Recommend somebody.
I'll, I'll recommend Austin Clays to the group. Like I said, I think I, I know of indirectly all five of these and their pedigree of being in the leadership program. But I think probably on the face of these applications, I'll nominate or make a motion for Austin Clays.
I'll second it and comment.
I just would like Tyler to clarify, because what I thought I heard you saying is that it might be a conflict to have somebody from Lloyd be on the commission, because the commission actually negotiates a contract with Lloyd for management of that, of safe home.
That was my, yes.
Thank you.
Want to withdraw your motion?
I'll, I'll withdraw, pending further conversation.
Okay. Okay.
Everybody's, everybody's looking at me, so I'll go down the list to a banker then and modify that to nominating or making a motion for Cole Robbins.
I'll second Cole. I've known him personally for a long time.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for Cole. Any further discussion?
Comment.
Commissioner Kerski?
Kind of what Commissioner Kipley was saying. Thank you, Tyler, for getting that interest. You know, Leadership Sioux Falls is about getting people involved in that first step, doing that first thing, and, you know, thank these people, and, you know, from us for, for, you know, taking that step and putting their name out there. That's just fantastic, and I hope it's not the last time we see them. We want to, we'd like to have them back, so, thank you.
If I could add, I've leveraged the, the entire group a few times. Well, too many times, right?
Yeah, and I, I would note, Chad Beigler noted on his application his interest in other boards, and it sounds like you're asking all of those folks in that, in that group to consider other boards in the future. I know that's one group that I've recruited people to, other nonprofit boards in the community, like Boys and Girls Club, et cetera, so that is just a great pool for us to select from, and I'm glad we were able to select one out of five very qualified people, so hopefully they stay engaged. I appreciate that sentiment.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 25 for legislative update. Tyler?
Yes, Tyler Clack, Commission Office. So this is through February 2nd. Well, a number of things have happened, obviously, since then, so a few updates to note. HB 1098 would increase juroration. That's when we're watching, I think, if I recall, the estimate was essentially double what we're looking at as far as juror compensation. I'd have to double-check that, though. Also, in my memo, I wrote SB 1, SB 99, that should be Senate Bill 131, was the one to remove the 3% or CPI limitation, which failed in Senate tax. A few others. Senate Bill 155 creates a fund of 50 million for counties to request grants or loans for the improvement of jails and juvenile detention facilities. There was an amendment to that that would require partnership or some sort of legal formation of at least three partner counties that that facility would serve, just to keep in mind as we consider the Juvenile Justice Center. There's also 109, 1084, 1114, 1136, and 1208, which were all either withdrawn or sent to the 41st day, and Senate Bill, that's it. Sorry, thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Tyler? Comments about legislation? Appreciate you taking, paying attention to all that. That's, there's a lot of things flying around in here this time of year, so very much appreciate that. All right, so that takes us to an opportunity for public comment.